Okay, well, we're gonna call the meeting to order. This is the Kensington Town Council meeting for Monday, January 9th. And welcome, everyone. And so we'll get started with a moment of silence. Is there anyone that we should think about Connor?
Yeah, if we could hold up the Ralston family, Joe Ralston's mom, Marguerite passed away unexpectedly on January 3rd. She was a longtime resident in Montgomery County before she moved out to Edgewater, Maryland. But I know the service for her is coming up on the 14th, so I just want to keep the whole Ralston family in our thoughts.
Okay, thank you. Anybody else? No? Okay, well, if we can just bow our heads for a moment. Okay, thank you very much. All right, we'll move on to the minutes. I know Nate had a couple of changes and there was a question regarding the land trust that Anne answered. And so I don't know if there is anything else, but I think everybody saw Nate's inquiries or his additions or changes. And if there are no others, if somebody could make a motion to approve the minutes.
So can you make the motion stating council member angles?
As amended?
Yes, thank you.
What was the date of the meeting again, December?
12th.
Okay, I'll move to approve the December 12th Town Council meeting minutes as amended.
Okay, is there a second?
A second.
Second. All those in favor?
Hi.
Okay, thank you very much. All right, we'll keep moving down. All right, from the mayor and town council, we'll start with the the fact that we will be having a council work session. It's scheduled for Monday, June 30th at 9:15. I'm sorry, thank you. January 30th at 9:15 a.m. at Town Hall. The council will be discussing with staff the 24, the fiscal year 24 budget priorities. So staff will be working on those in February. So I want to counsel to have some input on that in a work session. Okay, everybody still good with that date? Okay, great. All right, item B, Anne, do you want to take that one?
Sure, happy to. Just a reminder that next week on January 18th, we will be hosting at Town Hall a community training event with the Anti-Defamation League and the Montgomery County Police Department. Lieutenant Elkin will be attending for District 2. Thank you, Matt, for helping to arrange that along with two of the regional directors from ADL. And this will be a chance to learn about what's been happening in the county related to bias and hate incidents and what various community groups and the police are doing in response and how we as a community can be engaged in deterring hate and creating a safe and welcoming community. There'll be time for Q and A. There will also be time for small group discussion at tables. And the event is appropriate for teenagers, so age 13 and older, and they can earn SSL hours by participating. So please encourage your neighbors to come out and join in the training. And if you know some teenagers, we would very much welcome their participation as well. There is a registration page that you can get to from the town calendar. And we'll also, I believe, be going out in an e-blast and most residents should have received a postcard maybe today, maybe yesterday.
Got mine yesterday.
Okay, great. So I hope to see many people there.
Have you worked with Shirley about the room setup on what you need yet?
Not yet. I was gonna check in with Alex to see what our numbers were looking like, but probably I'll reach out to her tomorrow.
Okay, well, just a reminder, Monday is the MLK holiday. So you know, if you can get to him by Friday with what your setup is gonna be, or Tuesday will probably work too. But I believe the room should be empty now, is that right, Alex? Okay, yeah, British players moved out on yesterday, I think.
Okay.
So, okay, good. All right, do you need anything from me? Do you need sound from me?
We will likely need sound. I'm putting together the agenda now and need to check in with the speakers, but I think that would be smart to plan for it.
Okay, how about, is Melissa doing anything for this event or we're not recording?
Decided not to record since we're gonna have a Q and A and small group discussion and try to encourage a lot of conversation.
Okay, good. All right, great, thank you. And let's see, we have the Mobility and Traffic Committee. Darren or Nate, you wanna just bring that up?
Okay, yeah, we're planning to have a Mobility Traffic Committee meeting coming up here on the 24th of January over Zoom. Just wanted to announce that and acknowledge that it'll be added to the town calendar if it's not there already.
Okay, I would like to remind the council that January 19th is the MML chapter meeting and we will be meeting with Mark Elrich at the County Executive Office. So probably not who ever wants to go, let me know. We have to get okay to park in the garage at the County Executive Building, so. But that is the 19th. I haven't seen any updates from Monique, so.
What time is that, Tracy?
Um, it's usually 6:30. It's typically a pretty good meeting. I think they do serve dinner, but it's a good opportunity to have, Mark will update on his priorities, so. Okay, good, all right. It was suggested that maybe we should take public transportation to the meeting. So we can all climb on a ride on bus and take.
Get a bike.
This is why we're gonna carpool, okay?
We'll use Connor's Tesla, because I didn't get to hold everybody.
There we go. Now that I know how to open a door. Okay, well, just let me know. And also, I did notice, this is a while off, but if you want to put it on your radar, the District 18 delegation on February 26th, they will be doing their kind of report to their constituents at the Hollywood Cafe at Wheaton. This is, you know, open to anyone, but it typically gets a good crowd from the county as well. But there'll be more information coming out about that, but if you just want to put it on your radar. Okay, so let's quickly go through the council if there's oh, I'm sorry, let's go down to number two for the pedestrian bicycle access and safety vision statement. I think everybody got a copy of that.
Yeah, so this is well overdue. We realized, so when we have these work teams put together for putting together, but we wanted to prioritize this coming this year at the end of the summer. One of the groups was on community education and outreach and we decided to work with Alex and get the website updated and put together more or less a fact sheet to identify what the working groups worked on, what we've achieved, to promote some of the achievements throughout the towns that people can know what's going on in this working group. And we realized we actually never, we never had a vision statement and guiding principles. We were always guided by these principles, but we decided to actually put them on paper and work that through over the last couple of a couple of meetings and that's what's before you today. And it essentially, again, puts it in writing, but I floated it by Tracy and she said, yeah, it'd be good for us to, you know, officially adopt it as a council. So happy to answer any questions you might have.
Does anybody have any questions? We'll be posting it on the pedestrian bicycle access page on the website. So I don't know how else you want to use it.
Yeah, we might create some short, brief flyers or communications materials we can hand out during events, but mostly it would be added to the website.
Okay.
As a first step.
Okay. Counsel, any questions?
I think it looks great and it's, I think, will be helpful for people to see.
Thanks.
Does anybody in the audience have a question? Seeing any hands? Okay, does somebody want to make a motion? Like, let's just make a motion and just so we can unanimously approve putting it on our website. Nate, you want to make a motion?
Should it be me, yeah, am I moving to endorse it?
Are we making a motion just to put it on the website or are we making a motion?
I think that we're supporting the vision statement of the pedestrian. So it'll go on the website, but I think this vision statement is on our website and so we should be supporting the vision.
I didn't know the word. I just want to make sure we're making the right motion. We're moving to adopt the vision statement.
Where, yes, we're moving to adopt the vision statement that will then go on the website.
All right, so then I'll move to adopt the vision statement and guiding principles for the pedestrian and bicycling access and safety working group.
Okay, is there a second?
I'll second.
Okay, all those in favor?
I.
Okay, thank you very much, Nate, and please thank the working group for, I know they went back and forth with us a number of times, so thank you.
Thank you, will do.
Okay. All right. Lost my second page of my agenda. Okay, um, that's the town's policy. Okay, I know that was the last thing under Mayor and Town Council, so I'll just quickly go through the council. If there's anything else you want to update us on. Was there something, Nate?
No, I'm sorry.
Okay, Connor, I'll start with you.
Nope, nothing this month.
Okay, Anne?
One other thing to flag for the community. Catherine Wood with the Greenscape Committee has organized a Weed Warrior event this Saturday, January 14th, from 10 to noon to clear non-native invasive vines from the trees that are along Silver Creek near where Clum Kennedy Park ends and you move into county and park property. So if you would like to participate, we welcome no experience needed. There will be supervisors, there will be equipment. If you have questions, Catherine sent out a note on the town listserv, but I'm also happy to help answer any questions. But we welcome folks this Saturday, 10 to noon, just to meet around Clum Kennedy Park and Frederick on Saturday.
Is Parks picking up the debris that you're just taking it to the curb or?
I think it's that she has coordinated with Parks on the event. So I think they'll follow their standard process to pick it up.
Good, okay. No, it's great. It's ambitious in January, but we have had mild weather. And I mean, at least the stuff is dead, so you know. It's in a dormant, if you get into poison ivy or something.
I know, I was thinking about that because Beth Pierce has warned folks about the poison ivy over.
Quite a bit of it in there, yeah, so. Okay, so any questions regarding the Weed Warrior event on the 14th? Nope. Okay, anyone in the audience have a question? Okay, all right, Darren?
I don't have anything.
Okay, Nate?
Uh, just a reminder, there's a Green Team meeting this Thursday at 7:30, is that right, Anne? 7:30 to 8:45.
At Town Hall?
Yeah, it's in the map room.
Okay.
That's all for me.
Okay, all right. The atmosphere did come by today and they took down the lights along the wall and at the Howard Avenue Park. I think we had a little bit of GFI issues on the wall occasionally. A section would go out to figure that out for next year. But I think I got a lot of good feedback that people appreciated having that addition this year during the holidays. So but we'll see if we can figure that out, but I was pretty pleased with it. Okay, um, well, that's, that's all I have, so we can, oh, Connor, do you know if somebody brought this up? The Cafe Modena, somebody asked me about that. Is that still expected to open in January, do you think? Have you had it?
Yeah, I mean, the last I had from talking to Janet, who manages the property, the entire property of Modena, was that it is scheduled to open by the end of January. That was their goal. The pieces remaining, and I did a walkthrough with her. They were finishing the counters. So really, the construction is largely done. They are now in the queue for permits and their licensing from the county.
Okay, great. It'll be a nice addition. I'm amazed at how many people are looking forward to that opening. A lot of people.
Especially, I mean, those, especially on the North Side, a lot of people like Car Wash Coffee, although you had to cross Connecticut when we're a little bereft of coffee on the North Side. We are very much looking forward to it.
Yeah. We have Dunkin' Donuts, don't forget that.
And Starbucks. We do. Well, that's even further away, Nate.
That's true.
So it's a prime location to go to the dog park, go to the farmer's market, headed off to Noah's Children's Library, just, you know, so.
Play some pickleball.
It's coming soon, maybe. Oh, I am getting, Carrie Anne is starting to gear up to, we'll put out a 23, 24 town directory. So I know we've got a lot of new people that have moved into the town and people who've moved out. So it's always, try to do the directory every two years and that seems to be working pretty well, so. Anyway, we'll get that going. Oh, and if you haven't checked it out, Carrie Anne also has been working on an arts walk and which includes our murals and the carvings and that's now on our website under, I think it's Residence. So please check that out when you have a chance. And we're still doing a little tweaking, but it was pretty much ready to go. So we went ahead and loaded it.
Is that basically a map that identifies?
There's a map, there's a picture of each mural, believe it or not. We now have 11 murals and I think eight carvings, wood carvings, and there's a map included, so you can take an arts walk. So the murals are listed on a page and the carvings are on another page, which they link back and forth.
Nice thinking about cross-marketing with the pedestrians. Right?
You can see the wheel spinning.
If you guys want to, want to figure that out, that's fine too. Right now, it's just a basic map with little stars and.
No, but I think it's a great idea to be able to promote the town in different ways, with different themes. So I'm just thinking about, we had thought about how we can identify different, you know, bike racks or biking infrastructure for people that would have an easy bike ride or walk to get to places or different routes they could take to walk to explore the town, so. I'd love to learn more about how you are thinking about promoting it in addition to putting on the website and.
Okay, it's actually under, it's under "about" on the town's website. If you go to the "about" at the top listing.
I'll check it out, yeah.
Yeah, check it out and happy to make any changes if that, or, you know, add an additional map. If you want to include, you know, biking too, or, I mean, this is mainly just showing you where each one is and I think the emphasis is on walking, but if you want to include biking too, that'd be great.
Yeah, that's great, awesome, thanks.
Okay, let's go down to, from the town manager and staff, Matt?
Mayor and Council, the staff has been talking with Diane Sanderson of Spring Bilingual Day School regards to the fence at St. Paul Park that needs to be repaired and they're looking to make an improvement there. And we realize that our current policy, which was adopted in 2011, allows the town to pay for a three and a half foot chain link fence as a replacement. And in reviewing that policy, we would like the council to consider changing the standard to a either four or six foot wooden stockade fence depending on the location of the replacement or a new fence. We also have a resolution this evening further down the agenda for you to consider. But this is something that Councilmember Crimmens and I have been speaking with Ms. Anderson about. And we'd like for the council to change the policy for the staff.
Okay. Counsel, you have any questions for Matt on that?
No, I will add, so Matt and I, as he mentioned, we went by and looked at the fence along St. Paul Park and Spring Bilingual and, you know, it's several years old and she's looking to replace it. If we put, I mean, I think it's just obviously a four foot or three and a half foot chain link fence is kind of suboptimal. You know, what we ask our residents to do with their properties, what we look to do with our properties, I think we should kind of hold ourselves to the, somewhat the same regard. I agree, I think the, just a stockade style fence is the norm. I know later on, we'll talk about the potential of, you know, cost sharing when the fence ends up on the property line between town-owned property and private property. And I think the clearest thing we can do for staff right now is just to provide them that we're gonna have, this is our defined baseline. It's a stockade style, four foot, where, you know, it should be four feet or six feet, when it should be six feet, just to help so they know how to do cost estimates for any sort of cost sharing with private property.
Any other questions?
I come on mute. Okay, thank you. The only thing I would, I would sort of question is, shit. Whatever, I can't see anything anymore. At least I'm not a cat.
Yes, we can hear you.
I know, yeah, I'm perfectly happy with the resolution in this context and I don't know how often it comes up that we're asked, that we offer to pay half of the cost of a fence between two properties, one which the town owns. I would just like to maybe prevent the circumstance where that we are, we calculate our contribution at one half of the cost of the woodstock fence. But the property owner adjacent to us says, well, I'm just gonna do chain links, so go ahead and pay me 60% of the cost of the fence. Because half of the cost would be more than half the cost of the chain link fence. I don't know if it's worth worrying about or if it's too, too nitpicking.
In that case, so we would only do this if it landed on the property line, right, Matt? In the sense of if they did it, if a private property owner that was adjacent to town land put a fence 100% on his or her property, then there is no cost sharing. They bear the 100% of that cost. But if they come and they want to put it on the property, then we have to agree to do it together, right? So they wouldn't, if they, then if we agree to a stockade fence and we share the cost and then they put in chain link fence, couldn't we just, we force them to take it out because they didn't? They're gonna need a permit for it either way. They would have put in a fence in violation of the permit that they requested.
So I don't know if Matt wants to respond. It sounds like the point is that we would prevent that from happening in reality. Simply because the only way it would arise is if the fence is on the property line and if it's on the property line, we would only consent to a wood stockade fence.
Are you allowed to, I didn't realize you were allowed to actually put a fence on a property line. So we're going through the fence process now too, as Matt knows. We have to get a story area work permit for the fence, but we can't, that's the names, we can't put it on the property line because we would have to get a work permit for both houses, right? Both properties.
You would need.
Are we actually technically allowed to do it on?
You're allowed to put it on the shared property line as long as you have a letter of the adjacent or buddy neighbor stating that they're okay with it. We do not recommend fences to be on the property line of residential properties. This policy was put in place because there's a number of town parks that are adjacent to residential properties and one of our residents reached out to the town back in 2011 and asked for the town to help share the cost of a fence. So that's where this policy came about. And, you know, with regards to someone maybe putting a chain link fence in, when we put, you know, maybe a four or six foot stockade, we can add some language to the resolution just to clarify that in case that was an issue. But it does leave it up to the town to deny the request. You know, there has to be funding available in order to proceed, but this would just allow us to basically change the standard of how we assess how much funding could go towards a fence as opposed to looking at a three and a half foot, nine gauge chain link fence. We're looking at a stockade fence, so.
I think a good example is probably Flynn Park where you have the three foot chain link on both sides, actually three, on three of the sides.
So it just, so if we, and again, if this is too pedantic, just tell me to be quiet. But for the resolution, if we amended it by, for paragraph two saying, adding language at the beginning that said something along the lines of, in the case where the applicant proposes a wooden stockade fence, the town's allocation shall be determined at one half the cost of that.
Yeah, or we could just set a standard. We could just say any fence that is located on a shared property line with town property must meet the minimum of a four, six foot stockade fence depending on the location.
I don't quite know what that means. I mean, I've got neighbors next to me who are proposing a horizontal fence, horizontal slap fence, which seems to be like a trendy thing these days. Does that count as?
A stockade fence is just like a standard six foot fence that you would see around town for the most part.
But you said it could go down to four feet.
Four feet, yeah, a four foot fence would be in the front plane of the house. Anything, anything on the side or the rear of the plane of the house would be six foot.
All right. But so, Matt, would you prefer like another whereas clause that says, whereas the town's policy is to require a wooden stockade fence on property and any residential between?
I think that'd be perfect if we just, yeah, if we just added a whereas that established, you know, within the resolution that the town's standard fencing on town property would be a stockade fence.
Okay.
Just to be clear though, from your earlier description, Matt, it sounds like principal reason for setting the standard is to help with a cost estimate. A property owner wouldn't be precluded from putting a nicer fence in under your.
Correct, and there wouldn't prevent the town from wanting to put in a nicer fence in either. So within the resolution, it allows either the town or the private resident to pay above and beyond what the cost estimate would be. So for example, if we decided that, you know, St. Paul Park needed something a little more than a six foot stockade, you know, if we made that determination and the council asked the staff to proceed, you know, we could spend the funds above and beyond that and we would only charge half of the six foot stockade to, in this case, Spring Bilingual.
Right, right. So just wanting to clarify that by saying that the town standard is to do this, that we weren't then boxing ourselves into only doing that type of stockade. That's all.
Just looking at, now that we're getting pedantic. Do you, you said four, four in the front plane of the house, six on the side or back? Are they required to do six on the side of the back or could they do four?
I mean.
Because the way it's written right now makes it seem like they have to do four or six, excuse me.
Um, no, they could do four. I mean, I, you know, like, for example, Flynn Park would be the example where you might want a four foot instead of a six foot.
Yeah, and I'm just looking at the language with that. Would that prevent them from doing it as a four foot, how it's written now?
Okay.
Do we need to change that, just?
Yeah, we can change that.
Do they even let you put chain link in the historic area anymore? Is that still an option?
Yeah, I think you can.
We don't even allow it anymore in our own code.
I think you, I think you can if it's replacing, not if you're building a new one now.
Okay.
I believe, I'm not 100% sure, but.
Or you're just replacing maybe a small section of what's already larger. Because there actually is quite a bit of chain link in the historic district. I mean, that's what pretty much everybody was putting in it in the backyards at least. So do you feel like you're able to make this amendment without having to go all the way back? So do you feel like, um, you're able to make this amendment without having to go all the way back to that we post approving this?
Let me tell you what I'm thinking and, and see if we can edit this on the fly. An additional whereas clause says, whereas the, the town believes this cost sharing policy applies to requests for a wooden stockade fence or better quality. That would be in the whereas, and for section three of the policy, right now it says may require, town may manage may require several bids are close to determine the standard baseline allocation from the town. I would add at the end of this, and the cost sharing by the town will not exceed one half of the actual contract cost. I think what that does is that addresses this situation where we're dealing with a, a side or rear fence where the person asking us to share the cost is allowed, uh, up to the value of a six foot fence, but only wants to put in a four foot fence. And we're saying our cost sharing won't exceed one half of the contract price.
What happens, just to be pedantic, because.
We're all being that way today.
But I like where your mind is going here. What happens if it goes in the opposite where they get several quotes? And then for whatever reason, the, I guess we're just, we would pay the quote of the materials and not the installation, correct, Matt? Not the project, but just the cost of the fencing materials. I mean, what if they come in, they're like, oh, you have all these stumps and roots and things that we didn't realize till we started putting shovels in the ground, instead of it being a twelve hundred dollar project, it's a three thousand dollar project.
Yeah, we, um. I mean, that could be an issue.
That happened with the dog park.
Yeah, it happened at my house too, where they had to, because of the, you know, doing their best care around large tree root systems, they ended up having to use more posts than they initially estimated, and it, you know, it wasn't much, but it went up a few hundred dollars.
The only way this policy kicks in is if the fence is actually along the property line. And if it's actually along the property line and they encounter rocks or roots, that's kind of on us equally with the property owner. So I, I think that's fair for us to cover that.
Okay. Lawyers.
I know.
Alright Darren, you want to take another? Rewrite it on the fly?
Well, I, I, hopefully Susan can get this from the recording, but I, I would add.
For making a motion.
Clause. Okay, so I would, uh, well, I would propose to amend the resolution R dash zero two dash two, twenty twenty-three to add a whereas clause, whereas the town believes this cost sharing policy applies to requests for a wooden stockade fence or better quality. And then to section three, at the end of the sentence, I would add, and the cost sharing by the town will not exceed one half of the actual contract cost.
Okay, before, I, I don't know whether that was his motion, but we haven't opened it up to the public, so I just want to get that opportunity before we take a, a vote, so. Um, does the council have any more questions or input that they want to provide or happy with the language that, um, Darren just provided?
Okay.
Okay, uh, is anybody in the audience have a question regarding this? Discussion? We won't be voting on it until we get down actually to the ordinances and resolutions at the bottom. Okay. Alright, so Darren, keep thinking about those so you can make that motion when we get down to, uh, number two in the ordinances, resolutions. Okay. Alright, Matt, what else you got?
Or, uh, Mayor Council before you this evening is resolution number R dash zero one dash twenty twenty-three. Resolution of the Mayor and Council of the Town of Kensington authorizing the donation of surplus vehicle, a two thousand eight Ford F two fifty to the Montgomery County Students Automotive Trades Foundation, which is, um, Edison High School in Wheaton. Uh, this would be the second vehicle that we've donated to them. Uh, we donated a, uh, Ford uh, F one fifty to them, uh, two years ago. Um, we reached out to them last week and, uh, they're very excited to get this vehicle. As the council is aware, it is not running, so it needs a new engine, so it will keep the students busy, uh, this spring semester, so.
Council, any questions regarding this, uh, resolution? No, anyone in the audience have a question regarding the resolution? Okay, can I make him have a motion?
I move that we adopt resolution number R dash zero one dash twenty twenty-three. A resolution for donation of surplus vehicle, uh, two thousand eight Ford F two fifty to the Montgomery County Students Automotive Trades Foundation.
Okay, is there a second?
I second.
Okay, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you very much. Okay, Matt, second resolution?
Thank you, Council. Uh, before you this evening is resolution number R dash zero two dash twenty twenty-three. Resolution of the Mayor and Council of the Town of Kensington revising the town's policy with regards to installing or replacing fencing on private property that is adjoining or budding town property, parks, or pedestrian easement.
Uh, we have, uh, so, everyone knows we've made an amendment to the, uh, to that resolution, and there were no questions, but I will open it up again one more time to the audience if you want to make a question or have a question. Okay, not seeing any hands, so can, uh, Darren, do you want to make the motion?
I'll just make a motion to approve resolution number R dash zero two dash twenty twenty-three, as amended previously.
Okay, is there a second?
A second.
All those in favor?
Aye, aye.
Okay, thank you very much. Alright, we'll move down to public appearances. This is the opportunity for anyone in the audience who wants to bring up something that's not already on the agenda. Is there any hands? Okay, Joe?
I'm just curious to know where we stand, um, with the, um, Brookside Gardens Apartments.
Uh, we don't have an update for that tonight. So we've not, I know the county is working on that with the, um, with the, uh, Realtor. And, uh, hopefully we'll get an update within the next week or so.
Well, the last I heard, the, um, you know, the bids were due before Christmas, and, uh, so I'm just wondering, the bids were, you know, submitted by then, and we should know by now, shouldn't we?
Well, right before the holidays, um, pretty much between Christmas and, or just right before Christmas, um, the Realtor was reaching out to the county to, um, to discuss it with them, and I haven't gotten an update yet.
Were there other bidders who, uh, had a better, uh, better offer?
I can't answer that question, I don't know, Joe.
Does anybody in the council know?
No, we don't, we don't, we're not privy to that. The broker did say he would give us an update when, um, when they had an agreement with a buyer.
Okay, is there any other, um, items people want to, uh, bring up? Okay, not seeing any hands, so, um. I guess we can, uh, have a motion to adjourn. We will meet again, uh, we will be by Zoom in February. Um, that will be on the thirteenth of February, and, uh, and we'll meet by Zoom, and then we'll determine, um, whether we're going to, um, do a hybrid in March. Okay. Right, could I have a motion to adjourn?
I'll make a motion to adjourn.
Is there a second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you very much.
Yeah.
Alright, goodnight.
Everyone, goodnight.